The public order, the public hearing on the expenditure of trust funds. Those are trust funds from the facilities. Trust for the purposes of the elementary school HVAC system upgrade overages with contract price versus what was portioned appropriate. And then the middle high school flooring similar just increasing price from what was appropriate to or was anticipated to what was actually. So the purpose of the public hearing is to invite public comment on those two particular issues. Is there any public comment on that or any questions from the public on that? And hearing none. I think just to put it on the record, the purpose of that of the expenditures were essentially elementary school HVAC system. Contract price came in slightly above.
What's the. I gave you that.
Oh, you just.
So. The original bond and warrant article was 540,000, bid was 628,000, so $88,856. Is what we need to cover that overage which we discussed back in December when contract was awarded.
Right, and so. The the hearing tonight is for us to both hear public comment that whether or not the school. The board is going to make that provision from the trust. So we'll just do them one at a time. So it's a motion to spend $88,856 from the facilities trust for purposes of covering the difference in the contract prices appropriations between. School HVAC system.
So.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, and carries. Similarly, I took the motion to approve the expenditure of $19,582 from the facilities trust fund to cover the difference between. I think approved warrant article amount of $140,000 and the bid award of $159,582. So $19,582. So like $19,582 from the facilities trust. Thank you, Joe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sentence, motion carries. And if there's no further public comment, then we will. I'll take the motion to adjourn the public hearing on the.
So.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Joe.
Excuse me.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed and not voting carries. So we will adjourn the. Public hearing adjourned and we will. Open the regularly scheduled school board. First, first item on the agenda, actually first item on the agenda is the minutes, but did you want to introduce?
Introduce to the assistant president, the elementary staff, this is Jason Roberts. Jason.
Good evening, Mr. Roberts.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Very much looking forward to it.
Did know if anyone had any questions at this moment?
Yeah, why aren't you sitting up here with us?
They're not paying him yet.
Wendy, if it was starting, Wendy's like July 30th. Good, well, welcome.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And that, thank you for coming in. Introducing yourself, we were excited to meet you and we heard a lot of good things that. That came from the selection committee and the interviewers about you and we're looking forward to having you in the building and working with the kids. So first item on the agenda is the approval of the school board minutes from April 20th.
I'll make a list of the April 20th meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you.
No, I wasn't there. Doesn't matter though.
I'll start again. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion about those?
No, awesome job on the minutes, always, yeah.
Hearing the discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes as proposed, probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Oh, sorry.
And abstentions.
I'll stand.
Okay, and then motion carries. Approval of the non-public session minutes from April 20th. Let's take the motion to approve this.
I'll make a vote.
Thank you, Joe.
One second.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any further discussion on those? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Sentences.
I'll stand.
Thank you, Joe. And that much cares. Next up, correspondence. I think we just got the, the only thing that I received was the invitation to the charter school regulation.
And then the NCS was first in your back. And that charter school registration was June 2nd.
2nd.
At the Opera House in Littleton. Thanks, Joe.
Very well. And that business administration report.
Yeah, there's manifest over there. I'm just busy time of year. We have. Open enrollments going on, end of year stuff, beginning of next year, trying to get the budgets out to the teachers. That will come out soon. So they can start putting in their orders for next year. There is one thing that we're gonna, we need to do before the end of the year, kind of like the trust funds, but the capital reserve that we have for special ed and we talked about this during the budget season, I just need to. Check with the attorney on exactly how we do that because we moved the money into the special ed capital reserves, we don't technically have to have a. Trust fund hearing, but we did have the out of district placement this year that we didn't have in the budgets, we wanted to take that, some of that money in that account. And cover that in our general fund because we're over in the special ed. Function, but I just, I just need to find out, I think it's just an agenda item and you guys just officially approve that. Put that on an upcoming, we just need to do it before the end of this school year.
Okay, and that was something that was. Specific purpose of changing it to.
Right. Yeah, but there still needs to be a motion.
Okay. And that would be done in a way that would not be. Likely to. Die. Unnecessary information about particularly students. That it?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And Dr. Gaff's.
Yes, the elementary HVAC project will begin on May 31st, but the components of that, although there will be students in the building, the components will not interfere with. With any instruction, staff will be notified when, when that occurs. And the flooring project will begin on June 20th. Again, the staff will be notified, there will be no students in the building at that time. And it's only a section of the building, so. Let's see. The rest of it really, the rest of my information I can go as we go through the agenda.
Okay. And just for now, let's wait for. Okay, thanks.
Thank you to teachers, staff, custodians, student service workers, they're putting in a lot of time and effort and. You know, doing challenging time with spring coming and stuff and lots of sports, they're doing wonderfully and I thank them for that and. Students as well, it's a busy time for them, it's a big transition for them, uncertain next year, things like that, so we're prepping for graduation, we're preparation, prepping for celebrations. It's just been real busy, a lot of meetings, I could probably go on forever, but. It's just, it's just a lot, too much right now to be talking about everything. One thing that I would. Like to say that was regarding students and, and. You know, trying to establish some really firm expectations as to what should happen in the classroom regarding like cell phone usage and stuff, and so we keep having to reiterate, you know, what the expectations are. Talking to teachers about those expectations and moving forward because it's, it's a big distraction. Many of you might be going through that with your kids, but we see it doubly at our school and so, you know, trying to get them into a headspace where. They can concentrate on what they should be concentrating on, whether than, rather than distraction, so we're working on that and. You know, I think I hope teachers and parents are having good communications with their kids regarding, you know, proper usage. That's kind of where we're at right now. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I did have that too. So our state testing and AP, AP testing is all taking place right now. We're kind of finishing that up in the middle school, elementary school has a few more opportunities to do. The AP testing pretty much gone without hitch, our kids are taking in stride, we have some kids that are doing as much as four AP tests this, this week. They're, they're spent and so I'm proud of them for persevering and, and I'm proud of other kids in middle school, we have very little. Disruptions or disturbances in the testing process, so good for them.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you, were you done?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Are we anticipating sort of a more traditional graduation ceremony this year?
Oh, yes, yes. We're still trying to streamline it, but yes, it will be taking place in the gym.
Okay. Right, any other questions? Thank you. Any committee reports?
Uh, yes.
Matt and Joe, did you want to say anything about that?
Now, basically, they're just. Trying to put together their own policy and policy. Based on. Their infrastructure, what they're working on and how that's going to work or is it boring students?
Yes, but the policy is, is in addition to the current policy, but this new student privacy data laws that need to go into effect, so Trey is on that and we'll be. Working with that, yeah.
And even, I know there was a huge overhaul of the last year, the year before, even more stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
And again, they're looking at the technology plan, our technology plan has expired per se, but. There is no one at the DOE to review it yet, so we're going to move forward and just continue to update the technology plan. And make it a three-year plan rather than a five-year plan, with the three, five years, it's too many changes, you know, it's. So I want to do it in three years to see if we can keep up with the techno, technology requirements. We're also looking into different types of professional development training in support that teachers may need and trying to integrate the. Technology within the lessons so that it's not like, okay, this is your technology class right now, you know, I'm going to do technology and then here's your math class and here's your English class. Try to integrate it a little bit more so they can see how the tool of technologies is implemented into the instructional process.
No, no, they just, they had so many levels, new levels of security to go through.
Yes.
It was actually blocking out a lot of the sites that all the teachers were using right now, so they're trying to work through all that new security. And try to figure out a way to get through it because, I mean, they're going to tell the teachers now, but. It's like, what is it, 30 or 50 or something like that, new layers of security that everything has to go through coming into the school. It's a trade, actually trade on top of all, all the part, they got it, I couldn't imagine their job. Lucky to have.
Great, I think technology stuff is something that seems to be. Just beyond the actual hardware and software, just the rules with respect to what we're expected to do seem to be on the move all the time, so. So nothing new for tonight from housing?
No, you'll get them next, next, next meeting.
The facilities did not meet this. All right. Staff nominations, recommendations, resignations?
I do have two resignations.
Okay.
Resignation from Annie Bar. Yeah, resignation from Eleanor Harrison, Ellie Harrison.
I make a motion to accept Annie Bar's resignation with regret.
Did you say that?
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And abstentions and the motion carries, the resignation is accepted.
I mean, I'd like to oppose it, but it won't do any good.
Yeah, we appreciate her work on behalf of the district.
I'll make a motion to accept Eleanor Harrison's resignation with regret. One second.
Thank you, Jamie. Jasmine, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close, sessions, and that motion carries, and again. Thank. In the section on behalf of the board for her work.
And we are currently, you know, interviewing as each of these positions opens up, so you will hopefully have some nominations.
Okay.
And Mrs. Bar, she was language, is that right?
French.
French and Mrs. Harrison, what was she, she was paraprofessional, okay.
And. Any other. Nomination or recommendations?
No.
We've nothing on a new business.
Oh, we do have, I'm sorry, we do have support staff contract. And I will have the list and pass it out to you and certainly go into non-public. And you can look at it and then discuss it in the public, if you'd like, would you like the puppy now?
Let's take a look.
Yeah.
They may not need to.
I mean, I think we had to with respect to the previous ones because somebody had some questions that they wanted to get answered, that's enough, that. Maybe.
Yeah, exactly, TBD. I know.
That's, that's for us.
Can we go in and talk about that? Just kidding. I'll make a motion to accept this for staff nominations as presented.
Thank you, Jamie, Joe. Is there any discussion or does anyone have a request that we go into non-public for purposes of discussing these nominations?
No.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions, and that motion carries. You want those to look back? Considering business. Respect to that.
I'm sorry.
COVID-19 updates.
COVID-19, there was no updates.
Asur funds.
Yes, the DOE is currently, actually, apparently they just totally sedate. I'm setting up a, a meeting to audit the Asur funds that we've, you know. Used and, and making sure that we are in compliance, it will be coming on May 31st and June 1st.
It's a big federal compliance audit, but they're going around every district. Yeah. Not just Asur.
No pressure.
Yes.
Shouldn't everyone ask me whether or not.
Yeah. Right? Right?
Yes, right, yeah.
High school HVAC system.
Yeah, that, we did get in touch with Yett and Associates and we will be. Doing a walkthrough of our code and, and the company will be doing a walkthrough on May 24th, am I right in that thing? And walking through and seeing what, what the needs are again and just to review them, update them, and then they will be developing a design plan.
Did the heat, I, I, a couple of students were saying that the heat, the hot water was out, it wasn't working for a few days in the high school.
Was the heat, heat in the high school hot water?
Is that fixed?
Officially a pump.
Oh, gotcha. And that's fixed now?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good. I know, it's always something with the old systems like that, yeah, it's a constant. But thank God the warm weather's coming, so it's not. How long was that? How long was there no heat, hot water? How many days? I'm curious.
Well, considering that I did check it on Sunday morning, anywhere from Sunday morning until Tuesday at about nine o'clock.
Gotcha. So the day.
What it was, was the pump that takes the fuel from the tank and puts it to the furnace.
Gotcha.
Just to go.
Yeah. Well, good, thank you for fixing it, handling it.
That bleeding that is all.
I bet, I was thinking the same thing.
Their powers.
Yeah, they did last time too, yeah, that's a tough one.
Yeah.
And. School board goal setting session, so we talked about this last week, I did notice that there was pretty significant difference between what we have used in the past for the goals. Versus what was generated to the purposes of the. The purposes of the. Strategic plan, I think there, they seem to be quite a bit more specific and so it makes sense that we continue to do that even with the.
The strategic plan.
Right, and, and maybe we change what's in that document to reflect. You know, what we believe that the board can do to help support the strategic plan.
Yeah, what that other one is, is, is an outline of the components of a school district.
Yeah.
So those are all the ones, the focus areas we need to focus in on and then just a breakdown of it, so that what we do need to look at, okay, let's look at. Curriculum standards, okay, what are the areas that we need to work on, so it's, everything's noted there and you're right, the strategic plan, it zooms in on particular areas. Of that big sheet that you're saying, that's what I noticed was the difference between the two, so. The bigger one is almost like an outline.
And I'm sort of last meeting, so I apologize, but are we scheduling a meeting to draft this or?
Yeah, so typically in the past, or you remember.
I don't.
You don't? Well, it's like in 2018, 2019, I think was the last time.
What's that?
2018, 2019 was the last time. Generated, so it was, it was a while back, but basically. They, you know, what my experience was is largely follows what's in place because, you know, the board objectives shouldn't, are the same and. It's more or less a, an opportunity to look through what's been laid out and see if there's any needs to be added from, from those objectives to try to. Bring it up to speed with the, you know, any changes in the district.
So are we going to schedule something or?
I think that's the point, is to schedule a meeting. To, to look over that and I don't know when. You know, when best to do that, but yeah.
And we can look at our schedules and say.
Maybe we should do that before we break tonight.
You want to schedule.
Yeah, yeah. If we do it on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Plus our next meeting is the 25th, is that correct?
Yeah.
But you do it next week is off. You're busy, so never mind.
That's sort of our graduation time. I know there's some weeks, there's months in the summertime we have one meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe we could stick it to one of those Wednesdays.
All right, we'll figure it out.
I can't send something on.
Excellent. The apportionment formula committee, so we did get the draft letter. And a bunch of information about how things have sort of generally gone in the past, that all looks, you know. Fine to me, I don't know if anyone else, any thoughts on it?
Where do you want to start this?
Well, that's when the board can just give us the date to start and then we'll, we'll move forward with the rest of the steps. Then what, what the board has to decide on, who the board rep is going to be and who the neutral person is going to be, a neutral person is not going to be from Lincoln nor from. From Woodstock.
Right.
Well, the board has to. One.
Correct.
Yeah.
But you also have a neutral.
The neutral, the neutral is like the. Yeah, right.
There's seven, there's seven members, a board member from each town, a select one from each town, a. Member at large from each town and then the people first.
Or one of the.
For a neutral person, if a neutral person can't live in Woodstock or Lincoln, okay, I have an idea. Will be actually in, but at school.
I nominate Allison Rand, I'll let her know.
Oh, I said it that, that started fourth, it, she'd be fantastic.
Rand isn't her last name, so I apologize.
Yeah, she doesn't live in town. And she has lived in both towns in the past, so, yeah, no, I think that's a good.
Does she have Rand on any town?
Nope.
Because she is.
Oh, she is in Woodstock, isn't she? She does, that's one, yeah. Does she?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, she does, yes.
There's also Rick Baker.
Rick Baker would be really good. Tell him seller.
Rick Baker.
He would be awesome. He would be awesome. He would be.
Tired, maybe have a little time in his schedule.
Good call.
So, so for tonight's purposes, we just sort of need to pick a timeline. Yeah, I mean, we can handle.
Set the first date, just give us a first date.
Okay, so the first date that the committee would meet.
Or approximately. Let's do it so that the towns, if it changes, the towns can incorporate it in the next budget and they start their budget prep stuff in October.
Well, it wouldn't change until the next school district meeting.
The last timeline you had, you got from February. So it would be school districts, it would be the following year. You're right, thank you for that. It wouldn't matter, yeah.
If there's no, my understanding is if there's no changes recommended, we just follow the day and that's it, if there's changes recommended, we would vote on that and then. The, the. I guess the district would vote on our recommendation.
You would vote to.
If we voted to change.
Annual meeting, right, to taxpayers and then we would have to have it the next annual meeting.
So if it's at our annual meeting in March, it changes for the following year.
Because then after it's approved by the voters, it then goes to the state board of education for them to approve, so that's usually like in May. So then it doesn't go into effect until the next budget.
But it would, it would go into effect that the following, the June 1st, when the budget sets gap.
It's go.
Or a year later, it would be the next one.
I think it's the next budget cycle.
So we would have to do it prior to this year's budget season because they're not there, because towns are fiscal year and we're not.
It, it happens during our annual meeting, doesn't matter about fiscal, because.
Right.
The formula takes effect during the tax rate setting for the towns.
So if it gets approved.
So it would be the following year.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be that, it wouldn't be that coming school year, it would be the following month, okay.
It does, that's a question of the district.
Sort of part of the reason why we were thinking that we should start the process because it's been a while since it's been updated or even looked at and then. It does take some time to affect any changes that that's.
As long as it doesn't go a follow the full year, I mean, if we change it, goes to the district meeting in March and changes and then. This school association approves it, it can't change that. Fall in June, it's going to be a year from June because the towns wouldn't have budgeted for it.
We got to start it anyway.
Okay. Right, but it doesn't matter the timeline.
Has to go through a school district meeting. And then.
Yeah.
Right, of course.
State board event whenever they meet.
So we just need to have our process completed before, before the.
To bring it to the voters whenever you want, if it changes.
Right. Okay, so. As far as the first meeting. I mean, do you have any sense of when you think it'd be reasonable to expect if the towns and. I mean, I think it's going to be fairly straightforward for the. School board to come up with our, we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting to pick for our participants to include our. Out of town rep or neutral rep. We can put that on the agenda for next, for next meeting for us, what's reasonable to expect for the towns to have their. Select board member as well as their member at large, because it's, it's like boards picking the member at large.
Yeah, and so, I don't know, let's see.
No, the school board chooses the non, versus a neutral member. Yeah, we, the member at large for each town. Oh. Select board. And then just another council.
So I don't know how long it would take the select member to do it, but their dealers out.
Yeah, what do you, what do you think?
Like, and I already know who there is because it has this customer. I don't know, that's what's the stuff there.
How about June 30th or June 15th?
June 30th is the first meeting?
No, that would be, I have to write, give a date of when they.
For them to have their information back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that given.
Either one, yeah.
And then we can, then we can discuss that at the next meeting and then we can also.
And then.
Then we can set an agenda.
Would it reach out to that neutral person to see if they might be able to do it?
Reach out to Rick Baker? I think so.
Reach out now because the piece says it can't do it.
Yeah.
You have to find someone else.
That makes sense, is anybody opposed to Rick Baker?
No.
Well, I think it's, thank you for this question, great idea. She'll set it first quietly. Good call. Feels weird calling her, Mr. Baker. Even when he was. Even when he was, I worked with him, he was still Mr. Baker. But I see him now, it's still Mr. Baker.
Okay, so we will have a bit further discussion on that issue. And superintendent evaluation. We're talking about the 2022 superintendent evaluation, which I think we'll just, we'll do, we'll just amalgamate those. This year, we're going to do, we're going to keep people on task with getting me back those. Everyone got a copy of the evaluation form in the packet?
Is that what you're doing again?
We're going to, it's the same thing.
Do it, fill them out, get them back to you.
Yeah. And then I'll do what I did the last time, which was put them all together.
Well, hopefully I'll do what you did last time.
Well.
Yeah, no kidding.
I gave it back to you guys. You guys lost it.
You never gave it back.
So we'll, we will make sure that we'll schedule an actual executive session in order to amalgamate the two into a single document. With the feedback. But first step, fill it up and get it back to you.
What's the, do we have a, I went?
As soon as possible.
Three days, fine.
You know, 30 days, please, like may, like maximum 30 days.
I'll drop it off tomorrow.
Thanks. And that is, so any other continuing business?
I just wanted one thing. I want to thank Cindy Butler. I saw her out there on three different occasions, raking and cleaning up the fence line and around the softball field prior to our first game. And she did a great job and I appreciate her efforts.
Thank you. I don't see any students here, so we have staff recognition.
Yeah, I have a couple things. Teachers and staff want to thank the board so much for those delicious treats that you baked for us. For the elementary and the middle high school buildings. We enjoyed them for like three days. Wonderful.
Nice.
Thank you. We also appreciate the gift that the admin gave teachers and staff to, or teachers to peek-a-moon. Thank you. And the PTA also gave us free dunks gift cards, free, one free drink at Dunk's. So we appreciated all of that. Ms. Parent would like to share details about the National Honor Society induction. NHS inducted their newest members of the Osceola, Osceola chapter of the National Honor Society, which were Anna Harvey, Jordan Saborn, Madeline Claremont, Madison Heights, China Drappo, and Ethan Wargo. They joined Andrew Wilson, Sienna Mack, Brea Robinson, Sydney Pickering, Wee Holly and Student Artists, and Senator Gerald Aslan Woods, most outstanding students in the areas of scholarship, service, leadership, and character. So we congratulate the students on their achievements. Yeah. Ms. Parent will be presenting seniors with their NHS souls and tassels to be worn for graduation during the awards breakfast assembly on June 1st.
Nice.
Yes. Today, Ms. Duris, Ms. Parent, and Ms. Tom took about 32 high school math and science students to Hubbard Brook, the Hubbard Brook Experimental Forest, to learn about the math, chemistry, and physics related research that's being conducted there. And also at nearby Mirror Lake. They said it was great to get kids out of the building and to learn about real science happening in our community. Yeah. In student council news, the prom was last Saturday at the Indian Head Resort. Seventy-six students attended, which was awesome. I want to thank DJ Webb, Mr. Webster, who kept the kids dancing all night. Thanks also to Ms. Duris, who helps Ms. Witcher Shatter. And to Linda McIntyre and her husband Scott, who showed up with a very fancy professional photography set. They took many pictures of the kids, which are being made available on Facebook. Like, you've probably seen a lot of them if you get on Facebook. A huge thank you to Indian Head, who hosted the prom. The food was wonderful and the resort was beautiful. And they had a great night. Mr. Priman already touched on this, but AP testing was last weekend, this week. And there are, but very stressed students who are now relieved. But they, and also the whole middle school has been doing SATS testing this week. They've done reading, writing, and math. And tomorrow eighth grade will do science, so we've been working hard. Kids have been working hard. And there's one more thing that we, I wanted to mention, I don't know if it's more appropriate for the community session, but from what we've heard, the Lunar Race team is interested in sending around 15 of their race program participants to Lindwood for a partial year, partially a program, some of those go to high school. So we're not sure, it seems like this ball is already rolling. And if we're going to do this, we want to make sure, ensure success for all of our students. Obviously, those from away and those from town. And from teachers' perspectives, we like collectively have a few logistical questions as to what this model looks like. Are you still in the planning stages? Do you think it's feasible? We've generated some important nuts and bolts questions and we're happy to share the doc with you if you would.
I can give a bit of an update on that. And, you know, yeah, so at the last meeting, it was left essentially that, you know, in, in, in theory, the board was interested in living at that as an option. There wasn't enough detail with respect to the proposal for us to say yes and no. And it was essentially directed to administration to start working out with LRT and with the representatives from them. You know, how that would look and what it would look like. And I, and it sounds like Judy has a good thought.
Yes, what, and I forgot to bring this up, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up, Jackie. We have, since the last meeting, we have contacted the Lunar Race team and we are working on getting some details. One of the details was a MOU, a memorandum of understanding. And then they've developed one and we're looking at it. We gave out feedback and it's, it's at the attorney's office right now. And so then we'll have that for the board to review as well and get the board's input on that. We are looking at the tuition rate at this time and looking at how to determine, you know, what the tuition rate will be. It will be a consistent process that we're going to use. So, and that will be coming out as well. And so we'll, we'll see what happens with that.
When we have all that, I would love the, the teachers' input as well and suggestions and ideas. Absolutely.
And
I appreciate the work you've already done to generate these questions.
Are, are they thinking of a program where through the tenth school half day and a lead for half day?
It was kind of a hybrid.
They haven't nailed it down yet.
They were looking at more towards specials during the specials time of the day for high school, obviously, or middle school, I should say. But that's again, not been nailed down.
And they hadn't, when it was presented here, it hadn't been fully vetted through
No.
Their program either.
Right.
So it was more of a concept here. Very more, so there's very, as Jay said, very little detail about how, these are some of the questions that you're asking right now and we, we ask and we're just discussing about.
Is there a financial incentive? Like if there were any property owners who are already renting here, they don't have to pay tuition.
They have to be residents. There's a
Which is four days a week.
If you, you own a home in Lincoln and Woodstock, it doesn't make you a resident. It's you a domicile. So that's where you, your vehicles are registered, your driver's license is your, where you vote, that's your domicile. And that is considered residence. So you can own 12 houses in Lincoln, you're still going to pay tuition if you're domiciled.
That's how long you live there, four days, you know?
No, there is a legal definition of domicile.
So these are the sort of the questions that are yet to be answered. And, you know, I don't know if it's necessarily a good idea to have, to have a, a half question like we're having right now. We don't have the answers.
Yeah.
The administration doesn't have all the answers at this point. And I feel like there's a danger of, you know, any answers that we give you are, are, are not going to be accurate or not going to be fully informed.
Yeah.
And so at the risk of more sort of incorrect information being floating around, I, I hope we didn't. I guess I suggest is we are aware of the questions. I would encourage you to provide any issues that you have with, or questions that you have to the administration because they're sort of in the process right now of working out the, the questions and the details about how it, how it may, may not look. So, you know, if there's specific issues that, that you think need to be addressed during that process, now's the time.
We don't have issues, we just
Yeah.
Well, sure.
They are planning on having a model.
Communicate with the administration and that's, you know, while they're working this up, they can get your input that would definitely be
Well, when they come back, when they come back to an actual plan, that may answer some of the questions anyway.
Right, right.
Because we don't
We certainly, we certainly don't want to get too far down the road though, without addressing the concerns of
When they come back to you with a specific plan, then you kind of check in with teachers to make sure that plan is due.
No question.
Those questions should be included right now to make that one.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
We're in the stage of this where there's, where it's the planning stage. So we're trying to anticipate issues.
And it's not set in stone yet. This is not, this is still a concept.
So certainly, it's something that's being looked at, but not, no firm decisions have been made. Administration is working on it. We encourage you to engage with the administration.
I looked at Wargo Valley, you can't, I mean, it's
Yeah, and I think it's going to be a bit different than that. I don't know for sure though, that's, there were some comparisons and contrasts made with that model. But again, it's, it was all very big picture as opposed to being very detailed as, as how it works. But we certainly encourage the participation of, you know, the middle school and high school staff that will be affected expressing your, either concerns or questions about how it would work and, you know, whether or not it's feasible.
Yeah. And, you know, thinking about the area, I apologize to the staff. When, when it became a issue that we discussed at the school board, the administration should have communicated a little bit more with the staff. So that
I did, I did.
He's come to the middle school twice, he's given us heads up.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, we're planners, that's what we do.
Right, 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 right. And so it's like, if we are fortunate to have a staff that wants to be involved in
We're not opposed to it, you just want to know. You know, one of the, like, the teachers at the Wargo Valley Academy don't teach all the subjects to the sending schools.
And that's, again, it got to be worked out with the administration. And I, I just, I sat here, felt like, wow, we discussed something and made John nervous and didn't give any info, but
Yeah, we're not really nervous, like we kind of just want to have comments that the nuts and bolts have really been bought for it.
Haven't, haven't bought the nuts or bolts together yet. When we get there.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other community inputs?
I just had, I just had one. There is a lot of excitement about our band concert next week. And the elementary review, which is on June 2nd.
Yes.
May 19th and June 2nd, mark your calendars. It's really, like, the kids are so excited to have real in-person concerts and music. And it's, we were looking back with the seniors on last week.
Is that at night?
It's at night, it's at 7:00 PM in the gym. And it's fifth grade, middle school, high school bands. Fifth grader, man, bring your, I'm sorry, I love with fifth grader learning band.
No, I love it. See, this is stuff that I'd love to get an email. These, these things, because, I mean, one of, I was reading, one of the board, old board goals is to encourage more participation of the school board at school events. But I have no clue, because I don't have a kid in school. So when, when there's like, and I miss poetry out loud too, or poetry slam. I was like, oh darn it. I, because I, I don't have a kid in school. So I would love to go to these things that, um, that
I think that
I don't
Our school board goals, I think.
Yes, yes, thank you. Because this is, I love these things and I had the, the concert, the June 2nd concert on my calendar, this is the district meeting. I was excited to hear it then. Yeah.
Or any further community input? See, none? Need non-public?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Then I will pull the board to go into non-public. Doesn't want to, but yes.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, public.